Good evening. Good evening. We want to call to order the March 22nd, 2018 Port Arthur Independent School Board Trustees Meeting. It is our regularly scheduled meeting. The time is 5:30. We're going to begin with an invocation by trustee Brandon Sherrod Barti.
Let's bow our heads. How much grace do you father becomes you? Thank you for this friendship, fellowship, and most of all importantly, God, for this business meeting, our God. We ask that you will clear our heads, clear our thoughts, let me make the best decisions for this district and for our kids of Port Arthur. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Let's stand for the pledges to the United States flag and to the Texas flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Our mission statement in Port Arthur, oh, I'm sorry, roll call, I'm sorry, son.
President Frank.
President.
Vice President Ambrose here. Secretary Brown here. Trustee Barti.
Here.
Trustee Hillary.
Here.
Trustee Lofton.
Here.
Trustee Reed.
Here.
Our mission statement. Our mission as the primary source of public education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population by providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. We're now prepared to go into closed meeting under the authority of the Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074 and 551.082A2. The Board will meet in a closed session to consult with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, including settlement offers and other legal matters in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas are clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. Consider personnel recommendations, Texas Government Code 551.074 as follows. Consider and if appropriate, approve employment of teachers. Consider and if appropriate, approve non-renewal of probationary contracts. Consider and if appropriate, approve return to probationary status. Consider and if appropriate, approve renewal of probationary contracts. Consider and if appropriate, approve renewal of term contracts for professionals. Consider and if appropriate, approve renewal of term contracts for administrators. Consider and if appropriate, approve renewal of probationary status of employment contract for administrator. Consider and if appropriate, approve employment of athletic director/head football coach at Memorial High School. We'll now go into closed session. Good evening. We want to welcome each and every one of you to our Board of Trustees meeting. We've been in closed session and now we are coming out into open session. The time is 7:05 and now we're going to begin our meeting. We're going to take the orders of the day and we're going to change the order of our agenda on tonight and we're going to go all the way to the personnel. We're going to go all the way, it is on the last page of your agendas. We're going to call orders of the day and we have some things that we're going to talk about. We know that many of you are anxious to hear some announcements that we're going to make and so we're going to even move that up and act upon that. So we're going to begin with personnel. Mr. Superintendent, please.
Thank you Pastor Frank. The first thing on the personnel report, we are asking for approval of employment of teachers and you do have those in your packet.
We have a motion to consider if appropriate approval of employment of teachers. Do I have a motion? We have a motion by trustee Barti, second by trustee Ambrose. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Secondly, Mr. Superintendent.
I am asking for the approval of the non-renewal of probationary contracts.
We have a motion for the approval of non-renewal of probationary contracts. Do I have a motion? We have a motion by trustee Brown. Second by trustee Hillary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Next, we're asking for the approval of return to probationary status of one employee.
We have a motion to approve the return of those on probationary status. Do I have a motion? Motion trustee Brown, second trustee Barti. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we're asking for the approval of renewal of probationary contracts.
We have a motion for the approval of renewal of term contracts for professionals. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
So move trustee Hillary, second trustee Brown. All those in favor say aye.
We're asking for the approval of renewal of term contracts for professionals.
We have a motion for the approval of renewal of term contracts for administrators.
Contract for, we haven't done professionals first. We did?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Approval of renewal of term contracts for administrators?
We have an approval for the renewal of term contracts for administrators. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion. What a motion?
A motion.
Motion trustee Brown.
Second.
Second trustee Ambrose. All those in favor say aye.
And we're asking for approval of renewal of probationary status of employment contract for administrators.
We have a motion for the approval of renewal of probationary status of employment contract for administrators. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Motion trustee Brown.
Second.
Second trustee Barti. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Motion passes.
Thank you. If you would allow me, President Frank, to basically talk, we would like to thank everyone for their cooperation and thank the Board of Trustees for allowing us to do what we needed to do in order to find the perfect, which we hope is the perfect, head football athletic director for the Port Arthur Independent School District Memorial High School. We want to publicly thank Coach Kenny Harrison for his work over the years. We feel that he has represented Port Arthur extremely well, he and his family. His wife is a member of this district as well. His children went to school here, graduated from here, his daughter is here. And so we wish Coach Harrison the very best as he moves on to his next chapter in life. So we are, we will be calling upon him and asking him to come and visit us and tell us what he's doing as he has moved on. We have a lot of individuals in our community and across the state of Texas that is interested in our district. We are extremely happy with the applicants that apply for the position of head football/athletic director for the Memorial High School. There were a lot of great applicants and we are thankful that they did apply. And I'll go over the process that we used in order to get to this point. On February 15th, 2018, we appointed an interim head coach in the way of Coach Thomas Brooks. Thomas Brooks has done an outstanding job, he did an outstanding job the entire time that he was here, the two years that he's been here. So we look to him as a quality man and we know he is dynamic, so we are eager that he continues with us. On February 19th, 2018, we posted the head coach athletic director vacancy. On February 20th through March 5th, we accepted the applicants for the head football coach/AD vacancy. This was a 10-day period excluding Monday, February 19th, which was a holiday. On March the 6th, the application period closed. On March 7th through 13th, 2018, we screened the applicants for required degrees and other eligibility requirements. On March 14th through the 16th, we contacted 16 candidates who met the requirements by phone and scheduled interviews for them on March the 20th, March, yeah, March 19th, I think the 20th. There was one applicant that called in and he refused himself because he had accepted a head coaching position in another district. March 19th through 20th, the interviews, we interviewed candidates for the head football coach/AD. Each candidate was interviewed for one hour. We allowed the candidates to show us exactly what they had. We did not rush them. We allowed them to bring in their PowerPoint presentations. We listened to them. We asked questions and they asked questions of us as well. On March the 20th, while in the interviews, the interviewing panel submitted their top five candidates. The panel selected were Mr. Leroy Leopold, Mr. Danny Gore, Mr. Frank Neal, Mr. Bruce Reyes, Dr. Melvin Gedwood, Dr. Glenn Mitchell, Ms. Kathy Londo, and myself. Today we're here to accept the, to ask for the approval of the head coach. The process was stellar. We were very intrigued with a lot of our applicants and we know that each one of them would have done a great job. I did, as I shared with our Board of Trustees, I had a chance today to speak with our students, 15 of our players today. And I tell you, that was the last thing I needed to do before we made the final decision. So I asked Dr. Mitchell to call down 15 of the football players. They came down and we talked. I didn't ask, I didn't want administrators there, I just wanted the players. And I asked them questions and they talked to me and I told them, we weren't talking about names, we were talking about the football position. We were talking about what did they want in a coach, what did they want out of football? And the conversation went so well. It was, it was something that I did not expect. A lot of our students said, you know what, we just want someone strict, we want someone strong. We don't want them to be scared of us. You know, some of our football players, some of our team members, they can be a little scary, but we don't want them to be scared of us. We want someone who can talk to us one-on-one. One thing in particular that I thought was just profound, one of them said, you know what, Dr. Porterie, they need to have chemistry between us. We need to have chemistry with the team, they need to have chemistry with the team and the coach. We need to be able to react to one another. Another one said, you know what, if you look around this room, Dr. Porterie, a lot of us don't have father figures. And we need that, we need someone strong, we need someone who's going to tell us when we're right and when we're wrong. We don't want anyone to play with us, we want someone to come in. We want them, we don't even want, we want them to be so strict that we don't want to smile until they smile. All of that, and they said so much more. And I thought, wow, you know, our students are brighter than what we give them credit for. We look at students and as I told them, we as adults, we walk around and we make decisions for our kids and we don't consult them. So today we did, we consulted them, assembled of what the football team is. And I tell you, this was one of the proudest days of my career because I'd never sat down one-on-one and just asked them what did they want? And they told us. They told us the very first day, we want him to come in and introduce himself and he, I want him to tell us the plan from this, from this present day all the way through December. So with all of that said, Mr. President and Board of Trustees, I am recommending for the Board for the head coach athletic director of Memorial High School, Mr. Brian Morgan.
We've heard the recommendation coming from our superintendent. Do I have a motion for acceptance of this recommendation?
Motion.
We have a motion by trustee Reed, second by trustee Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any comments, any statements, any opposition?
Opposed.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
President Frank.
Aye.
Vice President Ambrose.
Aye.
Secretary Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Barti.
No.
Trustee Hillary.
Aye.
Trustee Lofton.
Nope.
Trustee Reed.
Aye.
Let the record reflect by a vote of five to two, Coach Brian Morgan is the new head coach of the Memorial High School Titans. We'll now go back to our regular agenda. We'll begin, there is no public participation. We'll now have staff reports, Impact Strategic Consulting LLC.
Yes, thank you. We do have Vicki, Chloe Gold with us. She is with Impact and she is going to do as a presentation, her presentation, and then we will go forward. She has been an integral part of working with our district and with our FEMA, which is, which is a lot of work, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for the intro, Dr. Porterie. And again, my name is Vicki Gold and I'm here representing Impact. We've been here for a few months now, working directly with Dr. Porterie and with Phyllis Jean. Thank you for the opportunity to allow Impact to participate in providing this presentation pertaining to FEMA grant programs. Okay. All right, before I begin the presentation, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands exactly what public assistance grant is all about. And basically, it's a grant that serves to provide assistance to state, sorry, it's better, it's a grant, sorry, it's a grant that, that provides assistance to state, local, tribal, and certain nonprofit organizations so that they may, so that they, so that they may assist their communities and quickly recover from any, from major disasters or emergency declared by the president. So the 406 Public Assistance Program itself serves, its main purpose is to utilize, it's utilized to strictly repair damages caused by declared disasters. So any, any facilities that were impacted by Hurricane Harvey in this case will qualify for that grant. Now, the cost share itself, it's, it's a 90-10% share, basically meaning 10% of that has to come from the applicant. In this case, it'll be the district that will cover 10%, but 90% of it will be reimbursed by FEMA. However, the first, the first, for category B, August 23rd to September 22nd, for emergency protective measure, all of, the entire grant is reimbursable at 100% as opposed to a 90-10 grant. Any date after that, then it becomes a 90-10, 90-10 cost share, okay? The threshold, however, for all of the projects as an independent facility, small projects are considered any amount, any amount, actually to qualify for the grant, first of all, it needs to, the threshold for the grant is $3100, meaning if, let's say for instance, Memorial Hospital, Memorial High School sustained damages less than $3100, then it wouldn't qualify for the grant at all, okay? Considering that it sustained more than $3100, then it does qualify for the grant. But however, in order for it to be considered a large project, the amount needs to be $123,000 or more in order for it to be considered a large project, okay?
I have a question.
Sure.
If it's a, I have a question. If it's a large project, cap is $123,100, that's reimbursable at 100% if it was accrued after September 22nd? Explain that, please.
No, it's the different categories. Depends on what category it is. If it's emergency protective measure, which I will show you in the following slides, if it's emergency, emergency protective measure, basically funds that were utilized to save lives, for instance, or to, for category A where it was debris removal, unfortunately the district did not have any debris removal, but in this case it would be emergency protective measure, then it will be covered at 100% between those two dates. And the next slide here on page four will show you the process of public assistance. From the time that declaration, the president declares the disaster, and FEMA comes on the ground, the first thing they do is that they coordinate what they call an exploratory call. It used to be called other things, but now they stick to the new terms, exploratory calls. And basically there, it's either in-person or a conference call and what they do is they tell you what they're going to do about their process and it's a joint effort with the state as well. So basically for them to tell you what your expectation of them should be and how they're going to proceed with the process. The next step is the damage inventory process. Basically that's when the applicant, in this case the district, they will, they will do a damage assessment of all of their facilities and identify which facility was impacted and how it was impacted by the storm. And what they do is they create, we created a list, an inventory list, identified all facilities and how it was impacted. With that list, then it's submitted to FEMA. Once it's submitted to FEMA, then we held a, what we call a recovery scoping meeting along with FEMA and the state. And at the recovery scoping meeting, the main purpose for it is to go over the damage inventory. That way it is clear of everything that was identified on that list that they understand it and they ask us anything, like documentation that they will need in order to start coordinating a site inspection for them to come on site and evaluate the assessment. After the recovery scoping meeting, then the site inspection takes place right before the formulation of projects. Site inspections is basically another joint effort where FEMA, the state, and the applicant all go to the same site. And the main purpose for this is in order for them to agree on the damages because the last thing we want is for FEMA to write something else and while they were on the ground, they assess something else. So we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, okay? After the site inspections, then we have what we call the formulation of projects. At the formulation of projects, basically the stage that we're currently at. At this stage, we are in the process of assembling all the documentation that FEMA is in need of in order to write up the scope of work and write up what they call the project worksheet, okay? Once that is completed, the project will be submitted for review. And normally, even though FEMA reviews it, they write it and they submit it to us so that we may review it, us being the applicant. And once we approve it, and then it's returned to FEMA, and then it's a process for funding. Now, even if it's a process for funding, if it's approved for funding, the funding does not come directly to the district. It goes to the grantee. The grantee is the state. And the state will then manage the funding and provide the funding to the sub-applicant once all the required documentation are assembled, okay?
So, does that mean that the state would have complete autonomy as to how those funds are distributed? In other words, will every district get a fair share or will some districts get more than the other?
No, the state, your share, the district's share will be whatever it is, that whatever amount is that you spent, what we submitted. Don't forget, public assistance, it's a reimbursement program. Yes, whatever we spent is what we'll be submitting to get reimbursed, yeah. So if we submit a million, that's, that's what we're going to get back, we're going to get back 90% of it, yes. Any other questions? Once after the sub-grantee, which is ourselves, once the district receives their money and then they can prepare for closeout. And doing this process is very, very important for the district to keep track of all of their documentation because at closeout, what we want to do is avoid any de-application. So it's imperative for us to keep track of all of our documentation as we prepare for Some of the eligible activities for the public assistance grants are, as I was saying before, the first category falls under category A and B and those are your, A's are debris removals, but in this case the district did not have any debris removals, so we will focus on emergency protective measure, okay? Emergency protective measure are elements such as mold remediation, pumping water out of the buildings, etc. Permanent repair category, all of categories C, D, E, F, and G. The only category that qualifies the district is category E, which is public buildings and equipment. We have facilities and we also have some of the equipments that were damaged. We have contents that were damaged that also falls under category E. Those are the two categories that the district will be submitting applications for. Page six. This is to give you an idea of how, of what projects have been submitted to FEMA. I'm not sure you can see, but we have a total of 10 projects that will be formulated by And the majority of them have been merged, multiple facilities have merged in a set project number. The only two projects that are really standalone are the administrative building and Adams Now, the timeline, what's happening?
One of the projects is project 10- One of the projects is project ten, one hundred fifty-five, one zero zero five five. The new press box at Thomas Jefferson, Memorial Stadium, and Mills. Press box, okay. So the press box received wind damage?
There were flooding down.
At the bottom.
There were flooding.
At the bottom.
At the bottom.
At the bottom.
Yes. At the bottom.
The elevator.
The elevator.
The elevator, not the press. So just a bit about it.
Yes, because that's where it's located.
Yes.
What are the, what's the story?
Just in the elevator.
Correct.
And which also includes the remediation that took place because there was mold in the elevator shaft. Now, as far as timeline is concerned, for emergency work, which will be on category B, normally it's six months from the declared, the date that the disaster was declared. In this case, the six-month period ended in February. Now, we did apply for an extension. We're granted an extension for category B work until June.
You requested an extension?
Yes.
So have it.
Yes. It was approved until June. Now, for permanent work, the period of performance is usually eighteen months. And we were hoping by eighteen months, it would be done. And if we need to, there's always room for, to request for extensions. Okay. Now, another grant that was just launched about mid-February is hazard mitigation grant, which is four oh four. Okay? Now, the difference with hazard mitigation grant is that the funds are strictly utilized for reducing future damages. And it does not necessarily need to be used for a facility that was impacted by the storm. It's very competitive. And you also need to have an improved mitigation plan in order to qualify for hazard mitigation grant. The project also needs to be identified in the mitigation plan. And with HMGP, the cost share is a seventy-five, twenty-five share. Seventy, meaning seventy-five, will come from FEMA with twenty-five percent of the district. But I've seen it in other states where the state may consider within that twenty-five percent. They may give ten percent of it. But after speaking to the state, they haven't decided yet. For now, it's still twenty-five. And the hazard mitigation grant process itself begins where the applicant notifies potential sub-applicant. In this case, it's the state that will notify the district and which we are aware of. And once they notify us that it's being launched, and then the sub-applicant submits the proposal to the applicant. And that's currently what we're working on as far as hazard mitigation grants is concerned. Then the applicant reviews the application and selects, and selects the projects and prioritize them. But don't forget, considering that HMGP is very competitive, they submit it to the state. And the state, what they will do is that they will prioritize all of the projects in order to see what will come first. And normally, what they usually like to do is areas that were impacted by the current storm will give, will get priority over other areas that were not impacted by the storm. And once the sub-applicant submits the application to the applicant, which is the state. And then they will review the application jointly with FEMA prior to approving it and submitting it to me with. Now, the key element with HMGP process is that you cannot break ground until your application is approved. On the other hand, when you look at public assistance where it's a reimbursement program, hazard mitigation grant is not a reimbursement program. So the federal government literally gives you seventy-five percent of the cost of the project. The seventy-five, I consulted with Tilk to find out how much it was as far as the cost share for hazard mitigation grant. And they stated it was seventy-five, twenty-five percent share. There was a possibility for a change, but when I spoke to them, that was, that was what they were steering with the state of Texas. On page nine, there's a few type of projects that are eligible for funding. Structure, elevation, mitigation of structure, flood risk reduction projects, initial projects. Initial projects, initiative projects are usually like early warning system. And state and local plant updates. And this is something like the city or county will consider. But with the district, what we would like to consider is mitigating the administration building and Adams building by floodgate doors, considering that it had a lot of water. And there, that's the image that I was thinking to get to show you what floodgate door looks like. And let's say for instance, at the admin, I'm sorry, at the administrative building, there was also, you know, water coming in. There's a lot of damage in the server room. There's potential for the server room to also be raised above ground. Or just the servers themselves. So that's something we're looking into. At the time of my review, the city, the district is, falls under the mitigation plan of the city of Port Arthur. And their plan was approved last year, twenty seventeen, and it's good for five years. So the district falls under the city's mitigation plan. Basically meaning the district will be eligible for hazard mitigation. If we decide to consider floodgates, for instance, it will be a phased project. The first phase will be engineered, and the second phase will be construction.
So you mean that the floodgates, it's water retention, keep water out of the building?
To keep water out of the building.
So we put all the other cores, areas of water entry. It's not, it's concrete, some sort of term, it's what it says there. So what's the mitigation factor to put in measure that's going to keep water out of the building, not just the door? The door might be the first one entry. When eventually wants to water rising, it's going to seep in wherever it is.
Another way to mitigate the structure, maybe water catch the building as well.
Okay, Vicky, let me say something. Let's be clear that when we talk about mitigation, as you may have said this, it's only mitigating the structure that was damaged. So we're looking at certain buildings for mitigation. Now, they showed us pictures. Now, we would have to decide if that is what we want for our buildings. There are pictures where there is a barricade that goes around the entire perimeter of the building. And it's in the ground, and it's on top, but it's just like floodgates. So that would happen at the administration building and Adams because those are the two areas that were hit the worst. But it is, it's a wall that's around the building like the floodgate. You know, when the floodgate's closed, the water can't get in. So if we would elect to do that, now, the thing you have to think about, how would our community feel with a barricade wall around an administration building and a school? How would it look? But now, it's easier to do that with an elementary school because you can put colors around the, you know, colors around the wall and make it all the red, the blue, and make it cute for elementary. But around an elementary, around an administration building, it would not look as attractive to the building. But if it's going to keep the water out, then we'll have to make that decision. But it's only to those buildings that were heavily hit.
So waterproofing makes, makes it more durable. This is to the wall gate, probably more feasible to put the structure around.
Possibly. We'll have to get it assessed and see what is most applicable for us. We'd have to see.
And that's something that the engineering firm will help with the decision-making. And on the last, the last bullet, I referenced CDPG funding as a match. There's also the possibility of that twenty-five percent share that the district would have. You could also apply for CDPG. And any amount that we receive with CDPG can contribute to the twenty-five percent share. All I have for you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Vicky. Next, we're going to ask LRG to come up. Tonight, we do have Mr. Randall Harris. We have Mike Keen with LRG and Mrs. Bergeron. So I'm not sure who's going to come up, but Randall, please. Randall works with our insurance coverage. He is working, you know, we, sometimes insurance agents don't catch everything. So what he does is he goes out and he makes sure that the insurance company knows exactly where our damages are.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity to work with Port Arthur in the school district. My name is Randall Harris, LRG, a public adjusting firm. And what we do is handle claims on behalf of the insurer. As you know, the claim with your district has been pretty significant. There's been a lot of damage at almost every facility that you have. We've inspected all the facilities and working with your carriers in order to make sure that you guys are paid for everything you're owed. Right now, you have claims basically on a couple of different policies. Because you have your NFIP policies, and then you have flood wells. I'm sorry, your excess carriers, which pick up anything after the NFIP. Right now, as far as the administration building, Adams, tin plaques, and... Sorry. Yeah, you have the tin plaques, and then you have the filled house. Those are the main buildings that are going to be covered under your excess coverage. Some of those, your other properties, will not meet the deductibles as far as to be covered under your excess. And for instance, at this, this building here, you guys have NFIP coverage and you have excess coverage on this particular building. What's going to happen, you have two flood policies. You have one claim that's going to be going toward the auditorium where floodwaters enter there. And you have one claim that's going to be going toward the gym floors. So two separate policies, but with the NFIP. Meaning it won't get into your excess coverage. Initially, the NFIP policies had denied coverage on these properties for, there was no evidence of flooding. So we came back with them and met, showed the damage. And now we believe they're in agreement that they're going to pay to replace the gym floors in both buildings. And they're going to pay for the work you guys sent out to the auditorium. Throughout the claims process, it's an ongoing thing. We're getting close to the end. We believe the carrier is going to, at this time, pay for basically everything that has exceeded the deductibles on the properties to result of the cover loss. Hopefully, you guys will be, in the next couple of weeks, receiving a significant payment about these few different funds. That's basically considered an actual cash value or an ECB payment. But that's not the overall settlement amount. And your depreciation will be recovered once your work is completed. I know you guys have endured a lot of hardships, a lot of headaches with this, between shuffling kids around, trying to keep your properties going, and often seeing out of locations that you don't know. Hopefully, with the way we're working with the carrier at this time, we'll be able to get this wrapped up in the near future. You guys can return to normal as soon as possible. And you guys probably have some questions.
Will we be able to recover all of our depreciation? Or is there going to be a cap on it?
No, ma'am. You have an RCB policy, which is replacement cost value. Meaning that ultimately, any funds in excess that you spent that is considered depreciation will be recoverable. There's, as far as the...
No questions yet?
I'm sorry.
No questions yet?
I don't know if it's that simple, but I'm pretty sure that we can, we can help you guys get it paid for. That way, you don't have to come out of pocket as little as possible. But with the damages that we found, reported, and documented along with the help of the district and those working at the district, we believe that we'd make a significant progress in our progress. And then hopefully, we'll have this thing wrapped up. There's only a couple of issues that are outstanding that are still unresolved as far as some electronic equipment, things of that nature. But I believe we're going to get that all taken care of for you as well.
Question.
Yes, sir.
As far as air conditioner and chillers, sometimes what happens with those units is that you don't see immediate damage but because of the flooding, there's something that happens over a period of time because of the water going in and those kinds of things. How do those things happen? Given that five months down the road, we begin to see one chiller at the administration building or another at the Queen or somewhere goes out. Is there a range of time by which we can go back and approach that subject of how we're going to handle and be reimbursed for those funds?
Yes, sir. I agree with you on that. As far as the, as far as your damage, you're somewhat delaying. As far as the, as far as your damage, you're somewhat delaying, they're not immediate answers. So that's, when we went to the admin building, once we signed with the district to represent you guys, that was one of our first concerns. So we were able to convince the carrier to replace all the HVAC equipment at the administration building. That way, you won't have to deal with it there. There may be other locations where you may have an issue pop up. And if so, I believe we have, I believe that we'll be able to get that covered. As long as we're able to prove that it's storm-related damage, then we should have that, probably get that paid for.
Yeah, and we're not worried about three, four years. I'm talking about a reasonable amount of time that we can go back in and connect the dots in and say that there is connectivity between storm and the damage that's been to that particular issue and that particular equipment.
I totally agree with you. And that's, it's not uncommon for that to happen. And that's why, anything that, it may not appear, that there may be items that were submerged or impacted by floodwaters. And to most people, they may, they may think, well, those items are fine. But under certain conditions with certain types of water and scenarios like this, we view that as damage. And our job is to get you paid for anything that is damage. We're reasonable about it. But if there's something that's going to cause you an issue later on, we're not going to sit around and wait for, wait for a problem to arise. We're going to, we're going to pursue it as a damaged item or damaged structure or building or what have you. And we'll pursue it like that. And that's why initially, we made the, we were very concerned about all the HVAC equipment at the administration building. And so we had the carrier agree upfront to make sure that all that was going to be paid for.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, Ford? Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, guys.
Next, we have with us Energy Solutions. So they're coming with good news.
It's a good spot to stand. So glad to be up here. Board, superintendent, thank you so much for letting me come here. I have one of the best jobs in the world. So my name is Mark Delvin. I work with Energy Texas and manage what's called our Commercial Solutions Program. In this program, we help all of our non-residential customers save on their utility bill and will pay you to do so. Now, Port Arthur ISD has been a very active member in this program for many, many years and has earned thousands and thousands of dollars in incentive funds from this program. And 2017 was no exception. In 2017, you did three chiller replacements at your elementary schools, Wheatley and DeWitts. And when you changed out these chillers, you ended up saving 45 KW and over 125,000 KWH. And then you received an incentive of almost $14,000. Now, when you're talking energy and KWH, you're kind of wondering, well, how much does that really cost in dollars? So by doing those retrofits, you're able to save over $10,000 annually by putting in more efficient means. Now, Port Arthur ISD is also part of what's called our RMS Program. It stands for Resource Management Services. In this program, Port Arthur was selected out of one of four ISDs in Energy Texas Territory to participate in this program. This is a behavior-based, behavior-based program where we help your teachers, your staff, and your students become more energy efficient. Now, Port Arthur has been part of this program for three years, and 2017 was its third year. And in 2017, you ended up saving over 488 KW and almost 2 million KWH. Now, we were so pleased with the results that we got from Port Arthur ISD that we've awarded you a $7,500 bonus check for your participation in this program. Now, altogether, Port Arthur ISD has saved over 533 KW, 200, 2 million point 1 KWH, and received $21,000 in incentives this year. Now, when you convert that to dollars of how much you're saving annually, that's over $160,000 that you're saving per year in your energy bill. And again, we're paying you to do so. And now, when you're talking about KWH and savings of your power bill, there's actually other benefits that happen too. You're actually helping the environment. So by saving that much KW, you're actually able to take 339 cars off the road and save over 177,000 gallons of gasoline. So what we get to ask you now is, who wants to hold our big fat check?
Mr. President, Board of Trustees, that concludes our staff reports.
Thank you so much, Dr. Porter, and want to thank all of those who gave reports on tonight. Thank you for the wonderful job that you're doing to help our district recover from Hurricane Harvey. It's been a difficult year, but through your efforts, you're helping us to be better and to recover in a way that's going to impact students and lives in our community. We want to begin with the minutes on tonight. We want to consider and if appropriate approve the minutes of the February 22nd, 2018 board meeting. Do I have a motion? Have a motion by trustee Brown, second by trustee Barti? All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? We have a consent agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and/or recurring nature, have been designated consent agenda items by the board president per policy BE Local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event, the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in the normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. We have items one through 12 on tonight. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion or for separate discussion on tonight? Are there any trustees who would like any of these items, one through 12, pulled for separate discussion on tonight? 12, item 12? Item 12, consider and if appropriate approve the overnight trip for Wilson Early College High School students, 38th Annual History Day on April 27th through 28th, 2018, at Bullitt, Texas State History Museum in Austin, Texas. Item 12 will be pulled. Any other items? Item number five, being pulled by trustee Ambrose. Consider and if appropriate approve the inter-local agreement and personal property resolution to help the tax assessor collector remedy a collection problem regarding real property. Items five and 12 have been pulled. Any other items to be pulled on tonight? Any other items, trustees? Going once, twice? All right. We're going to act upon those items for consideration of consent agenda. I'm going to need a motion to consider item number one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. Do I, do I have a motion? Trustee Reed, second? Second, trustee Ambrose, for those items again. Items one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Those will be taken care of. Let's consider item number five. Consider and if appropriate approve the inter-local agreement and personal property resolution to help the tax assessor collector remedy a collection problem regarding real property. Do I have a motion? Well, we got, we got a patent, I got to make a motion to discuss it first. Have a motion and a second? All right, board, it's open for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Porter, for the benefit of the citizens, would you please explain in detail what item number five means?
Thank you, Vice President Ambrose. The tax assessor collector has solicited the company of Leinbarger, Grogan, Blair, and Sampson to assist them in collecting delinquent taxes for property within Jefferson County. There are, there's property out there that needs to be back on the tax roll, and Leinbarger will help our tax assessor collector to get those properties back, real property back on the tax roll.
All those in favor of number five, say aye. Any opposition? Motion passes. Number 12, consider and if appropriate approve the overnight trip for Wilson Early College High School students to 38th Annual Texas History Day on April 27th through 28th, 2018, at Bullitt, Texas State History Museum in Austin, Texas. Do I have a motion? So moved. We have a motion by Mr. Guillory, second by trustee Brown. Discussion open. Mr. Gillory?
Yes. So would you give us another insight on how we can follow up to Austin and can we expand more or extrude some future?
Well, I'll answer your last question first. I hope we do have more trips like these in the future. Our students at the Woodrow Wilson Early College High School recently competed in a history competition. And 19 of our students went, went to the competition. And out of the 19 students, 13 earned a one or two. So now, these 13 students will travel to Austin, Texas and compete on our state level. If they went on the state level, then they will compete on the national, well, national level at Maryland College Park. So we're excited about our students headed to Austin to complete their projects. We're excellent, and we are really, really proud of them. So we are looking for more trips for our students academically, yes.
Let me say as well, while we have this floor for this discussion, that exposure is everything for our students. Many of our students don't get an opportunity to go places with family members or those kinds of things. I can remember going to planetariums, those kinds of things. So those are the kind of trips that I think that with all expediency, that we try to implement into the program and structure of our district. So I am full supporter, and I would pray that the superintendent would bring us more of these trips so that we can expose our children to things of this nature. So I would implore us to find ways to do that. Anything else? Any other, any other trustees? All right. All those in favor of item number 12, say aye. Any opposition? Mr. Superintendent, average daily enrollment and average daily attendance?
Average daily enrollment, 82.56, and average daily attendance, 93.04%.
Average daily enrollment by month?
For the month of February is 82.56.
That was enrollment?
Yes, enrollment.
Okay. And attendance by month?
Well, the attendance, 93.04%.
All right, all right. Yes, ma'am. I can't hear you.
Our attendance since Harvey is looking good. As I said, it's 93.04 for the month of February. We do have students coming back. We have an increase of 84 students from last month that have returned back to the district. So we are looking good and we're looking for more to come as their homes are repaired, as they come back to the city. So we're looking forward to more students returning.
Let me commend the district as well. And again, Dr. Porter, let me thank you as well for all of your efforts during Hurricane Harvey and all that you've done from the district in helping individuals recover. And so we're still continuing those efforts. And then you did share with us as well about the attendance on that Saturday. Can you kind of elaborate on that for us?
We were extremely happy to say, well, one day on that Saturday, we had to make up. And we had 91% of our students show up for school on a Saturday. And that was incredible. It was a beautiful day, and we were wondering how many would come. 91% of our students showed up that day. So we're extremely happy about that. And as you said, things have been going on. We congratulate the Memorial High Titans basketball team for winning the 5A championship. And we want to commend our community for stepping forward and having a wonderful, wonderful parade. I want to commend Ms. Kathy. She did a great job with the social media, getting all of that out. And we really had a good time. We had a reception, so everybody pitched in. Renee Broussard, I mean, there were so many people that pitched in on spring break, which is, which is, which is something. So we turned all of that around within a week. So we definitely thank everyone. And also, now, we're not going to ever forget about our basketball, but now we have soccer that is going to their first playoff, first round playoffs. So soccer is relevant. Look at the paper today, they wrote the paper with a full, almost a full page. So we're excited about our soccer and our soccer coach. And things are just looking up for the Port Arthur Independent School District.
All right. All heads and hearts clear. Receive a motion for adjournment on tonight? We have, we have a motion by trustee Brown, second by Brandon Gerard. Barti, all those in favor say aye. Let's go home.
All board members need to sign a paper, or this way, no move. Everyone needs to sign the paper.
Good night.